Good evening. The time is now 7:01. And I would like to call the order, the City Council meeting to order at this time. May we have a roll call, please?
Roll call shows all councilors except Councillor De Forest present.
Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will we all stand, please?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is Special Orders of the Day and Announcements. Item 3A is a proclamation recognizing the Beloit International Film Festival, which will be held February 16 through the 19th, 20th, and 12th. Vice President Vanderbilt.
Thank you, President Levy. This is an official proclamation recognizing the Beloit International Film Festival, February 16 to 19 of this year. Whereas the Beloit International Film Festival, BIF, will celebrate its seventh season of bringing great films, filmmakers, and visitors to our community, February 16 to 19, 2012. And whereas BIF has doubled the number of film venues, including new viewing opportunities in Janesville and Rockford. And whereas this year BIF will focus on the Spanish-speaking community with a new day-long BIF Latino devoted to the Latino films and culture. And whereas BIF will offer for the first time American sign language films for the deaf community. And whereas BIF has moved up to the next level in quality of everything from projection and sound to outstanding films. And whereas BIF has helped introduce visitors to our community, its hotels, restaurants, businesses, and people. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city of Beloit is proud to honor the sponsors and underwriters that will contribute to the success of BIF and declares the week of February 13, 2012 to be BIF, rather Beloit International Film Festival Week. We thank hundreds of volunteers and encourage all citizens to enjoy these exciting opportunities to view creative and imaginative films and to welcome the artists and visitors to the greater Beloit area. Printed the 6th of February, 2012. This is Kevin D. Levy, City Council President. Accepting the proclamation is Nancy Height, one of the major volunteers in the BIF procedure and process. And I can report that I did make her lanyard last week.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
Item 3B is State of City Address. And give me one minute.
And good evening. And before I start, I want to say to Councillor Lukey, is it okay if I have longer than three minutes? All right, thank you. To my colleagues on the City Council, City Manager Arv, City Attorney Casper, City Staff and Citizens of Beloit, I am honored to stand before you another year and present my State of the City Address. Last year I told you that the state of the city was good. This year I would like to take a different approach. You see, if I say the state of the city is good, someone could contradict that point and say it's bad. If I give the state of the city a letter grade, someone could disagree with that as well. So this year I am using a term that everyone can agree with, and that term is progressing. I can truly say that the city of Beloit is progressing, which simply means moving forward in a positive state. We have accomplished so much in a time when things seem to slow down. Allow me to list just a few, but not all the things were accomplished this year. We were finalists for the All-American City Award. A business in Beloit, paddle and trails were featured in the Northwest Quarterly Magazine. Our Protective Services Departments were recipients of numerous awards. Our DPW also received awards. And Chris Wash was appointed to the National Homeland Security Consortium. We had the dedication of the Stee Gray Bike Path. Our downtown area received an award. Our own city manager was appointed to as Vice President of a very prestigious organization called Wisconsin League of Municipalities. We have the Kettle and Carry Expansion. And we had forward progress on the Casino Project. If we were honest with ourselves, we can all say that we are moving forward. Take a look at the Riverfront Development. Take a look at the Gateway Development. Take a look at the continued development downtown and the wonderful work our Code Enforcement Department does in keeping neighborhoods looking great. Along with the countless professional services provided by our Protective Services and DPW and our city staff. All of this shows that Beloit continues to progress or move forward. Before I go any further, I must stop and thank all the city departments for their sacrifices during this year's budget process. One of the toughest budgets I have had to deal with since the 10 years I have been on the City Council. But let us take notice that it will not get any easier in the years to come. I personally thank you for making the tough decisions in your department. Though not popular, they were necessary. Thank you for your willingness to continue to provide great service in the midst of tough cuts that you had to do. All of you are professionals and continue to show this even during these tough times. Thank you for sharing your advice during the process. I assure you it did not fall on deaf ears. However, in the end, we had to do what was best for the city and make some tough decisions. These decisions did not only affect you and your departments, but they affected the citizens, which also include councilors. I feel I must pause here and say again, with every decision we make, it affects us also. This is why we examine, this is why we examine, question staff, and request facts before we make decisions. Once again, I say thanks for what you do each and every day. Beloit continues to accomplish great things. This is done by being forward thinkers or visionary thinkers. We must continue to move forward. Move forward in the area of economic development. We must come in every day not asking or waiting for new businesses or new development, but seek after it. We must continue to knock down doors of corporations to get them to think Beloit when they are talking about relocation, expansion, and economic opportunities. We must dialogue with other cities to see how they attract new businesses and imitate them. We have to continue to think beyond this region. When attracting new businesses, they must be held accountable in maintaining agreed-upon employee levels. I know we can't mandate this, but we must let them know that we will continue to monitor the agreements set forth. We must continue to move forward in the area of pursuing regionalization. This will ultimately help in the cost savings for the city. We cannot give up on this. We must be diligent in this effort. Let's not accept the fact that other towns and townships will not meet with us. We must keep pushing and make this conversation happen. We have done this with businesses, and it has paid off. We must continue to move forward in the area of business retention. Continue to visit businesses to see what their needs are and how we can help them stay here. No matter how small the business is, we need to make sure they all feel they are important to the city. Move forward in the area of code enforcement. Although unpopular, this area has helped the city in a positive manner and has proven to help improve neighborhoods. To the naysayers of Beloit, the individuals who always say that the city has not done anything or has not progressed, I say move on and develop a positive attitude. Instead of saying what we have not done, find one thing each day that the city has done. For example, if you are able to drive down your street that the DPW staff has plowed after a snowstorm, or your trash has been picked up by city staff, or you have called City Hall and got assistance from a staff member, this is something positive. As I reflect on my two years as President of the City Council, I can truly say it has been exciting, challenging, fulfilling, but most of all, it has allowed me to work with a group of councilors who are very interested and dedicated in moving the city forward. Having said this, I must encourage the individuals seeking a seat on the council in the upcoming election. Start studying now, because when you obtain a seat, you will have a short learning curve. You will need to be ready to hit the ground running. I must state this fact, however. Now is not the time to run for a seat for personal agenda items. You must be willing to work as a team. There is no problem in expressing your concerns, but at the end of the day, we must keep in mind what is best for the city. As you start your campaign season, it is very important that you concentrate on the city's accomplishments and not focus so much on the minor things that may be a challenge that we are working on. Keep in mind, when you are thinking along the signs of the challenges, there may be a lot of information that you don't have, that you are not privy to at that time. I stated last year that we must do something to address the homelessness issue in the city. I know we are meeting and working on this, but we must ask ourselves, are we doing all we can to solve this problem? In closing, I would like to borrow the lyrics from a renowned gospel artist by the name of Marvin Sapp, "Who Heaven Song and Title Never Could Have Made It Without You." Now Pastor Sapp was talking in a religious aspect. However, I would like to close this address out by saying to the councilors, the city staff, and the citizens, "We never could have made it without you. Because of you, the City Council and staff are wiser. Wiser about the things that are truly important to you. We hear you. Keep making the calls, sending emails, and complimenting us on issues that affect the city thus affecting you. Because of you, we are stronger. By binding together as citizens, we continue to build a strong city. Our staff and citizens are the best in any city around. You have stepped up and handled several tough issues, and the city is a better place because of each of you. Because of you, we are better, a better community, a better place to live, work, and play. A better place to raise a family, and a better place to have your business." To the councilors, I thank you for your dedication and your determination to make this the best city possible. You are all doing a great job. To the staff, thank you for all you do each and every day in making the city run, providing services to the citizens. I want you to know that we appreciate what you do. Please focus on the positive things about your job and services you provide. I challenge everyone in the city to continue to seek ways to move the city forward and promote the positive things we have accomplished. We can do great things when we work together for positive change. I know I didn't address a lot of things that we've accomplished. I mentioned a few. However, I believe in focusing on the future. That I think throughout this year, we pointed out our successes as they occurred. Whenever we had new development, we let the public know. So I chose this opportunity to focus on the future and what we need to do. As I did last year, I would like to close this address out with a quote that I live by, which simply says, "If I can help somebody as I pass along, if I can cheer somebody with a word or a song, if I can show somebody how they're traveling wrong, then my living shall not be in vain. If I can do my duty as a good man ought, if I can bring back beauty to a world uproar, if I can spread love's message as a master taught, then my living shall not be in vain." Thank you.
Item four, public hearings. There are none. Item five, citizens' participation. We have reached a point on the agenda where citizens may come forth and discuss or question anything that is not on the agenda at this time. I do have individuals that have filled out participation sheets. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We ask you to refrain from any personal attacks from any councillor, staff member. I will not hold, I'm going to hold you to the three minutes. We ask you to, I would give you a warning when you're approaching the three-minute mark, so you can kind of wind up your comments. Our first speaker tonight is Deanna Parrish. If you could come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Deanna Parrish. I live at 1600 Sun Valley Drive. Just here to answer any questions you might have regarding Article 7B on the parking issue on Cleora Drive.
Are there any questions? Or we could wait till we get to that item, see if we have any specific questions at that time? Thank you. The next person is Don Parrish.
Please state your name and address for the record, please. My name is Donald Parrish. I live at 1600 Sun Valley Drive. And I'm also here for Item 7B. If there's any questions you may have, I can answer them at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Zarell.
Greetings. Just wanted to come to the council. I know you guys are working on the IGA with the casino. I know you put out a draft, and you're working on making some alterations, you know, add in the hotel rooms. And I'm not sure if that's finalized or not. But if it isn't, I wanted to give you some suggestions to potentially make it better. One thing to keep in mind is, you know, assuming everything goes as planned and the casino comes to Beloit, there's going to be an extra, say, $5 to $7 million worth of funds coming into the city. And at that point, you're going to have to decide, what do you want to do? Do you want to use these funds to provide, you know, a rebate to taxpayers? Do you want to maybe start using these funds for your capital improvements budget? I mean, right now, interest rates are really low, but we know that's artificial. It's not going to stay like that. So when it comes time to, you know, work on something super expensive, maybe it'd be a good idea to have that money set aside for a rainy day as opposed to issuing a bond at that time, which could be as much as, you know, 15%, kind of like back in the early 80s. And then, of course, probably some of that money you're going to use in the general fund for spending purposes, maybe bring back some of the public safety, etc. One of my concerns is, if you are going to make that part of the normal budget items, and you're going to count on that money always being there, there's a potential that, you know, maybe one year, the money's not going to be there. Maybe, you know, the gaming business isn't going to be so hot one year, tourism could be down, you know, gas prices could go up. People decide, you know what, I can't afford to make as many trips out to Beloit as I usually do to visit the casino, so I'm going to have to cut back. And what would happen in that case is because there's that net win payment, the amount of revenue that they'd be bringing in would go down. Now, what happens from a homeowner basis, if your property value goes down, then all you do is you raise the tax rate, and you still are able to collect the same amount of revenue. But because we don't have that setup, the way the IGA is right now, you're not going to be able to basically raise that rate because it's a net win payment. So one of my concerns is, how are you going to make up for the shortfall? You know, are you going to say, you know, the casino business wasn't so hot this year, we're going to have to lay off a whole bunch of police officers, and hopefully we'll bring them back when the casino business comes back. That's one option.
Mike, I just want to let you guys one minute.
Thanks. And potentially another option is, well, let's take it to the taxpayers, because we can't do anything to get any more money out of that net win payment. But we could stick the city, the taxpayers of Beloit, we could stick them with a bill for the difference. And so either way you look at it, you know, it could be a tough decision in the future at some point. So all I'm asking is kind of think about that ahead of time, you know, maybe put a provision in there that says, you know, if you're going to use 35% of that revenue for general fund purposes, then maybe attach some sort of minimum that says, you know, if the, some sort of floor that floats up and down with the property taxes. So just an idea I had for you guys. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' participation this evening? Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' participation? Seeing none, we move to Item 6, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any item, any council which to remove from the consent agenda? Counselor Nuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we remove Item 6D from the consent agenda, please?
6D. Is there anyone else, like anything else removed from the consent agenda?
I'd move approval then of the consent agenda, Mr. President, except for 6D.
It's been moved by Vanderbilt, second by Lukey, that we approve the consent agenda ranging from Items 6A, B, C, E, and F. With motion and second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that portion of the consent agenda passes. Item 6D, is there a motion? Motion by Haynes, is there a second? Second by Nuno. Julie.
This is a certified survey map that would create the lot for the North Star Development. It creates a 32.08 acre parcel for the North Star facility. The CSM did go to plan commission. It is coming back to you because it involves the dedication of right-of-way. The CSM that was included in your packet included two conditions, which were that the final CSM shall be revised so that the northern edge of the right-of-way intersects with Gateway Boulevard at a 90-degree angle while including a 30-foot construction access easement along the southern end of proposed Lot 1. And then it had a standard condition about recording of the certified survey map. Battermans did submit a right-of-way to the city engineer, and based on that, he felt that this condition could be modified to not require that to be at a 90-degree angle. So it has been revised to say the final CSM shall be revised to include a 30-foot construction access easement along the southern end of proposed Lot 1.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from councilors? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second.
I guess I would have questions. Counselor Vanderbilt. What is the change then? I guess I missed.
It was required to be at a, this, there was a, you know, on bottom, there was a right-of-way that was being dedicated. The original requirement was that it must intersect with Gateway Boulevard at a 90-degree angle, the right-of-way itself. And the way Battermans showed it, you could actually put the pavement at a right angle, even if the right-of-way wasn't exactly at a 90-degree angle. And the city engineer did review it and was okay with what Battermans had put together.
Thank you.
But we still do need the 30-foot construction access easement along the southern end of that lot. So that part of the condition remained.
Anything else, Counselor Vanderbilt? No, thank you. Okay. Seeing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of approval say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, Item 6D passes 6-0. Item 7 is ordinances. Item 7A, please.
Proposed ordinance to amend the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from PLI, Public Lands and Institutions District, to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the property located at 1872 Porter Avenue.
Ms. Christensen, please.
This was on your agenda at your last meeting. You held a public hearing, and then it was laid over under the rules. This is the former convent building over by what was Beloit Catholic High. The owner is intending to have repair-oriented retail sales and service. Basically, they're intending to operate a business that repairs computers and office equipment. And then if this is approved, we would then work with Hendrick's Development and Head Start to rezone the remaining, so it would not be spot zoning. So there would be a bigger C2 district. We did contact Hendrick's Development, and we did contact Head Start, and they are both fine with being rezoned C2. The school uses do need a conditional use, so we would be also doing a zoning map amendment and a conditional use to allow Head Start to continue. They want to be completely legal, so we would do that. And we have actually received that application for the conditional use already from Head Start. So with that, I'll leave it to you.
Motion by Lukey, second by Nuno. Is there any council questions or comments? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving 7A say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 6-0. Item 7B, please.
A proposed ordinance to establish no parking regulations on Cleora Drive. Traffic Review Committee recommended approval 5 to 0.
Mr. Flash, please.
Thank you. A request for no parking on both sides was submitted by Don and Deanna Parrish for parking along Cleora, both the east and west sides. This was taken to the Traffic Review Committee. The Traffic Review Committee staff, our staff sent out surveys to nine of the residents adjacent to the area. Three were returned, two were against, one was in favor. Both the against and the in-favor people showed up at the Traffic Review Committee meeting. And through discussions at the meeting, it was determined to just have no parking on the east side of Cleora and leaving parking on the west side of Cleora. We recommend approval of that. The Traffic Review Committee did vote on that. It was a 5-0 vote.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions of councilors? Counselor Vanderbilt.
If it's permissible, I'd like to ask a question of you, Mr. and Ms. Parrish, who are here. What, does this compromise or this information that's been presented to the Traffic Review Committee, can you give me some history on it? Is this acceptable to you? Is this acceptable to Sarah's Pub? Has the problem essentially been resolved by the neighborhood? And you're just asking our home printure of acceptability here?
Well, we were one of the few residents in that area that has that border there, so that's why our participation was from the businesses. But you have a frontage road by next to Madison Road that is currently parked, there is marked "No Parking." I was wondering if that could be opened up so they could park there. That way, they're not on the residential side. But in early November, I noticed a gentleman parked near my property, relieve himself before he left the area, because he was parked on the street next to my property. And every weekend, I'm out picking up beer cans, beer bottles out of there. That's why we asked that no parking be, you know, allowed on that street. It put his business, he was It put his business, he was, he signed a agreement that he would provide off-street parking, so he says he needs overflow, let the overflow go out on the frontage road by Madison Road.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor?
So this is okay from your point of view? What we're.
Well, I'd like to have the whole thing changed so that none of that is parked, open for parking on Cleora. That all goes out to the frontage road along Madison Road.
Well, you're, you may get half a loaf here, but is that going to be enough or not? You're still going to be upset?
Well, when we get wins, anything that's tossed out on the business side is going to blow across over onto the residential side.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Thank you.
Any other council have any questions? Counselor Lukey?
Mike, what would happen if we had parking on one half of the frontage road and the other half no parking? Is that possible or it's a safety issue or what?
Well, it's a rural cross-section, so there's no curb and gutter on the frontage road. So you have to park with tires on the roadway and not obstructed, so it's not a real wide area. That's why the, when the bar was going for their expansion, that they were required to get as part of their conditional use, a parking agreement with their neighbor at the car wash. And that is in place. It's just a matter of educating the patrons that the additional parking is there, would be my guess.
The bottom line is they need more parking, but it's there. They've got, they've got to let people know they can park in this other area.
That'd be my take on it, yes.
And parking in the frontage is a safety factor.
I wouldn't recommend a lot of parking on the frontage road, correct?
But it should help a little bit, our neighbors. It should help by having half the street, the part by their houses, no parking now. Is that correct? That we're at?
Well, it will be, that's what's proposed, is to put no parking on the east side of Cleora, which is adjacent to the residential.
So it will help a little bit, hopefully.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor Lukey? Counselor Haynes?
Just a comment, Mr. President. Thank you. It seems to me that this would be a start. If this, if this really helps the residents, then this would probably be a good place to get started. If it doesn't, if it doesn't help them, I'm sure we'll be back revisiting this. But I think, no reason necessarily hold this up.
Okay. Any other council with questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and go directly to the merits of the state.
There's a motion from Counselor Nuno to suspend the rules, second by Vanda Bogart. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, out to the merits.
Move approval.
Motion by Vanda Bogart, second by Haynes. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, approves six zero. Item eight, appointments, there are none. Item nine, council activities and upcoming events. Counselor Sprite, sir.
I have nothing this evening.
Counselor Nuno.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'd like to take this just moment, something that's been on my mind for a while. A while back, we approved an expansion for Line Energy at the Pleasant Street substation. And I'd like to request that the staff go back and review that to see if all the planting units have been put in. I believe they've finished construction, and I don't believe that there are any planting units that have been added. I believe also in that, that we'd requested on the backside by the residential area for the college, that there was going to be additional ones, and I think that was up to staff's purview to work that out. So that's my request, please. Thank you.
Counselor Lukey?
It's great to see all these educators in the, in the audience tonight and students from Beloit Memorial High School, here part of a class, and we'll be out by 11 tonight, guys, so get you home in time for sleep. And former teachers and educators, Dorothy and Saritha Harrow, and the former principal, Sean Levy, with part of his family. Good to see all these educators here. Just glad you're here, thank you. So I wanted to.
Anything else? Counselor Haynes?
I have nothing this evening.
Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Just a couple of things, Mr. President, thank you. First, I had the chance to go to the State Line Literacy Council fundraiser at the Eclipse Center the other week with their chili cook-off. And I can report that there's some pretty good chili makers in town. I sampled most of them. So that was a fun and interesting event. And then I would encourage everyone to take advantage of the film festival that's coming up. I'm not sure what the number is, but it's well over 100 or maybe even 150 different films at a variety of venues. And you can see at a relatively minimum amount of money, a wide variety of films, some of them international. And if you're, if money is an issue, you can volunteer and you get to go see four of them for free if you're a volunteer. So I would encourage people to support that and be active with it and take advantage of that upcoming wonderful event.
The only comments I would like to add is I would also like to thank the students for coming out. We've had several at our last meetings. And Dave, you got the time wrong, it's midnight tonight. We kept the last group till 11:00, so we're going to keep them till midnight. That's all the comments that I have. Item 10 is city manager's presentation, community development reorganization.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I brief council quickly during the agenda review session, we wanted to share with you tonight a revised reorganization plan for the Community Development Department. As you all know, we had a somewhat unexpected resignation of one of our key division heads within the department, and that potential change in staffing would impact both the general fund and the community development block grant budget. So we did take a hard look at this. Julie Christensen came up with a reorganization plan that essentially shifts this workload among some existing employees who would be promoted to supervisory positions. There's a savings involved. I also mentioned to council that there's no specific legislative act required of council, but before we implemented the reorganization, we wanted to share it with council, certainly urge you to ask questions, make any comments about it, and we certainly would give those weight in, in coming up with our final plan for implementation. With that, if I may, then I'll introduce Julie Christensen, the Director of Community Development, and let her explain to council and community exactly what she's proposing in terms of the reorganization.
Okay, so the first slide shows the existing organizational chart. So currently, the Community Development Department includes three divisions, which is Housing Services and Code Enforcement, which Tom Clipper was responsible for, the Neighborhood Planning Division, and then the Housing Authority. The Neighborhood Planning Division includes both planning and the Community Development Block Grant and Home Program. And then Housing Services and Code Enforcement includes Code Enforcement plus all of our housing programs, our housing rehab programs, and all of that. The revised chart is just a slight shifting. It essentially flips the grant stuff and the building stuff. So the grant stuff goes into a newly titled division called Community and Housing Services, and then the building side goes over with planning. So I flipped grants and building. And the rationale behind that was that the Code Enforcement and Grant Administration are people activities, neighborhood activities. It's about how to improve our neighborhoods, how to work with people, you know, how to deal with kind of the people side of housing and, you know, properties. And the planning and building side then is the structure, the safety of the structure, the quality of the construction. It's more buildings. And obviously, you have people on that side too, but, you know, people in buildings, you've kind of have had them mixed up in both departments. The grant stuff interacts with the Code Enforcement and the funding and the Housing Rehab and the funding, and so it really ties it neatly together. And to me, that made more sense than the current organization, which I think has been in place since the mid-'90s. And maybe it's time to look at things again, you know, look at it again when, with fresh eyes after a decade or two. So the Community and Housing Services Division would then, as I said, include the Code Enforcement element. So from the systematic rental inspection program that citywide where the inspectors drive around, the multifamily fire inspections, they also do assist Public Works with the snow emergencies and the early trash set-outs. And that's actually, the snow emergency stuff has been working really well, even though we haven't had many this year. But the inspectors have, they enjoy going out in the middle of the night and taking cars, identifying those cars that are parked on the street. And then the Grant Administration side, which has gotten larger over the last several years, includes CDBG Home, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. It also includes the Fair Housing Enforcement and Education and providing staff support to EOHRC. And then Planning and Building Services is, you know, the normal stuff you see here for the planning. It's staff support, the Board of Appeals, the Landmarks Commission. It's all the building, planning, building, plumbing, heating, air conditioning, heating, the erosion control inspections, stop work orders, condemnations, and then it's, it's all of that. And essentially, what we're proposing to do is take some existing people who we believe have the skillset, the qualifications, you know, the proper education credentials to do these jobs, who haven't yet been given an opportunity to kind of step up into those level of jobs. And so do some internal promotions, not add any additional staff, not lose staff. Essentially, what happened, which you haven't seen yet, it's gone through CDA, Jim has heard about it, and Dave, is that block grant got cut by over $100,000. It's $127,000 this year. And so really, the goal was to try to retain the existing staff, retain the existing programs within existing funding sources. And so what we did is we essentially took what we had in general fund and what we had to the, you know, identify to those programs funded through block grant and figured out how to allocate those dollars. And what we end out with is a savings in the general fund of about $4,400 and a savings in block grant of about $49,500, which helps us balance the block grant budget. You'll see that we, you know, cut some additional things as part of the block grant budget when you see that your first meeting in March. But this is, does allow us to keep existing staff, do some internal promotions and provide, you know, continue to provide Code Enforcement, Housing Rehab, and some of these programs that we think are important to having a quality city of Beloit. And any questions?
Just to quickly add, the cuts in the block grant program obviously will be significant. We had a 20% reduction in funding, and it was unanticipated but somewhat fortuitous that this position was vacated because, as you can see, almost $50,000 of the needed cuts in the Community Development Block Grant program can be made simply by not refilling this position, redistributing the workload among other employees, and providing the promotions that Julie described. So this is an opportunity to save not just about $55,000 total in funding resources for the city, but to also really help the block grant program to minimize the cuts that are going to be felt by the agencies and the other programs that are block grant funded.
Any council have any questions? Now, I have a couple. Julie, we're going to distribute the additional responsibilities among how many people?
Um, three.
Okay.
I will take on some additional as a result of this and then two other staff people.
Okay, so you and two other individuals. So then the question I have is, for those staff members and yourself included, did you already, did you guys already have an overflowing plate? Because my concern would be that we say we want, we don't want to hire a person now, but I don't want to overtax the present employees that we have to the extent that they burn out and then we lose them because they're having so heavy of a workload and then we end up going down that road anyway. I just want to make sure. I don't know if they had a full plate or if you had a full plate and it was overflowing and now we're going to put more work on it. And I, I get the point that we need to save money, I fully understand that, but I don't know if I'm willing to save money at the expense of losing other people, because it doesn't make sense if we do that.
Well, our other option is to lay off people. I mean, there's not a good answer here. There's not extra block grant to be had. We can't, I guess if we're not comfortable with staff recommending cutting all the public service in order to fund our own programs. And so this allowed us to do a little bit of everything. We think there are some efficiencies that can be had, and I'm not trying to be, you know, that Tom somehow wasted time.
Okay.
But we think there's some efficiencies and we will be, as the police and fire head to do, prioritizing and things that are less of a priority just will not get accomplished.
Okay.
But we will do those things that are most important and that need to get done.
Okay, but the other two employees feel comfortable that they can handle the additional workload and you yourself feel that?
Yeah, we've, we've talked about this for the last several weeks and talked it over and talked it over to make sure we know kind of where we're at with everything and we're all comfortable with everything. And we are all in agreement on that we can handle this as a team. And I, I mean, I have to say that, you know, I've talked to the Housing Services staff and they are really a wonderful group of people and work together as a team. And I, I mean, I really think that they've leaned on each other a lot with Tom being gone and where they went to Tom with questions. And, you know, they work really cooperatively well together, the building side and the code side. And so I think there'll be a lot of, you know, more, there's a lot of teamwork there in that division already.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Haynes?
Actually, Mr. President, in the course of your conversation, you answered my questions, so.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor Sprite, sir.
Just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for taking on this extra responsibility and helping us manage a difficult situation with the cuts in the CDBG funding.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nuno?
Uh, thank you. I also want to echo those sentiments and appreciate everybody's effort. This is yet another example of so many different individuals throughout the city that worked for the city that have really sacrificed on behalf of all of us to bring our budget in line so we can still provide the high quality of services that we do throughout the entire city. So thank you very much for your sacrifice.
You're welcome.
And hard work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you, Julie, for the presentation. Item 11 is reports from boards and city officers. 11A, please.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for Homeland Security WISCOM upgrades to local agencies' grant program, the fire department.
Chief Leggett, please.
Good evening, council, city, uh, city manager. We are, I've asked Bill Tyler to join me at the podium. The next two items, three items on your agenda are all related. And if you have any technical questions, I would like you to refer those to Captain Tyler and I'll answer any questions you have about the grant itself. The Wisconsin Offices of Justice Assistance notified local public safety agencies that we were eligible for supplemental funding in order to allow them to access Wisconsin, state of Wisconsin WISCOM radio system. These funds allow public safety agencies to upgrade their mobile and portable radio systems that are approved for the 2012 implementation. All expenses related to these new and supplemental funds cannot replace any existing state or local funds, and therefore the two, three resolutions we have free today. This implementation has to take place by January 1st, 2013, and substitution of existing funds is not allowed, or supplanting funds is not allowed under the grant award. The fire department is eligible for an additional $55,000 in funding over what we have budgeted at this point, and this will upgrade our portable radio communications so that we can talk on the statewide trunking system. What that allows us to do is in the event of a statewide disaster or a regional disaster, allows us to communicate with other departments that may not have our radio frequencies on the state trunking system. And it also allows us to have long-distance communications from one end of the state to the other seamlessly, as if we were talking to each other right here, face to face. So it's an exceptional system, and this will take us a great deal further in our communication capabilities than we were able to do on our own with our CIP project that we're underway with this year. This is part of our strategic plan, it is a key strategic objective for this year and part of last year through the Department of Public Works and Transit. And then we're going to be installing these radios sometime in mid-March and then going through a testing process and validation process on all the channels and reprogramming with full implementation by the early fall. So if you have any questions, we just need you to approve the resolutions tonight for us to apply for the funds. And then also, there is a budget amendment for you and item C, 11C regarding the capital improvements budget, it allows us to expend the funds.
Okay. And I'll ask a question of the city clerk. Is it all right if we ask questions all, all three at one time, but just take motions separately?
Yes, separate.
Is there a motion for, first of all, 11A?
Motion.
Motion by Lukey, is there? Second by Nuno. Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Given our geography and our existing mutual aid agreements to our, with our neighbors to the south, what do these programs do for communications with Winnebago County and/or Illinois locations?
We've evaluated what all of our neighbors are doing also. Some are narrowbanding, analog, digital, and everything in between. So we've been coordinating with them to make sure that our system that we're upgrading to will sort of be forwards and backwards compatible at both ends of the house.
So the answer is yes. We'll be able to talk to them, they'll be able to talk to us with?
Yes. Yes, just many are making different changes, but regardless of what our neighbors do, we'll still be able to talk to them with the improvements that we have in place.
Will it go to Janesville and then south, or will we go directly south?
Pretty much, we can do anything in Rock County and our surrounding counties and in Winnebago County, Illinois.
Okay. Anything else, Counselor Vanda Bogart?
No, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we could talk to them if we had.
Any other, any other council questions? Now, there's a motion and a second for 11A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes six, zero. There a motion for 11B? Motion by Nuno, second by Sprite, sir. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of 11B, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes six, zero. 11C?
I'll move approval, Mr. President.
Moved by Vanda Bogart, second by Haynes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving 11C, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it approves six, zero. Item 12, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Haynes, is there a second? Second by Sprite, sir. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time.